Okay, if we can, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Note the time is 6:30, 4:00 PM. And if you're --
Agenda review and adjustments. Got a couple. We have a new teacher nomination that we're going to add to 7C. It's a late arrival, wanted to get it in tonight. As well, we will be putting in an executive session after public comments. We'll do the focus on learning and then the public comments and then an executive session. Expectation is anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour. And then we'll come back through and finish through the rest of the agenda. Anything else? Okay. All right.
So our focus on learning tonight is about our facility. And as a reminder to everyone, the board approved up to $15,000 this winter for the administration to start on a feasibility study and to start to look at some possible capital projects so that we can create a facility that's conducive to all the programming that we have started to put into place and so that we can build learning environments that will be ready for the future work that we're engaged in right now. So this is not just about bricks and mortar. It is about creating learning environments for our staff, for our students, and for their families that is going to really support all of the work that we're doing right now. Some of the pressures that we see are, as many of you may have experienced, we have parking pressure and have had to come up with some alternative plans around parking. We're finding that while our enrollment has been gently increasing and we have been increasing supports for students in the form of staff and programming, then now we are struggling to find places for people to work, both from a collaborative perspective for the adults, but also in individual and small group work with students, as well as meetings with outside agencies and organizations that support our students. So that is why we are engaging in the feasibility study. And tonight, you're going to hear kind of an update on where we are in that process since being granted the support of the school board to engage in this. And so, right now, I want to introduce you to Joe Green, who is from Joseph Architects in Waterbury. And he is working with our facilities manager Mick Musket and under the tutelage also of Rebecca Goulet, our finance manager, to begin the feasibility study. So Joe's going to come on up and I'm going to drive some of the visuals here and he also has some handouts for you.
Thank you, Sean. Thank you all. And now that you know who I am, it'd be great to kind of just go around the table so I can know who you guys are.
I'm Jake Bergen, board member.
I'm Matt McNeil, board member.
I'm Mike DeCarlo, board member and lifelong Wenouski resident.
Nice to meet you.
Alexander Dow, student.
Hey, Alexander. Nice to meet you. Have we met briefly?
Board secretary.
Yes. Okay. And a camera guy.
Always a camera guy, but never in front.
So I will hand these out. These are basically just hard copies of what Sean has here. So if you can just take one and pass it around, that'd be great. Do you want me to stand? Do you want me to sit? Does it ever work for you?
Neither one.
Want to make sure my -- Is that good for you?
Yeah.
Okay. So just to step back a second, a couple of months ago, I did meet with Mick and Sean and Rebecca to just try to talk about what this effort would entail and what the steps in the effort would be. And as Sean mentioned, there's a number of items that are being discussed and really what it is being formed as a vision plan to try to understand what the short and long-term needs and goals are of the facility and the community, as he said. So we've been engaged to try to help create a roadmap through what we would call a phase one or a step one in what some people might refer to as a master planning or a feasibility study. And in that engagement, our goal and our hopes is to work with your representatives to understand what the current needs are, both from a physical space needs requirement and also an infrastructure needs. We know that in facilities like this, which we understand hasn't had a major improvement since 2000, there are ongoing deferred maintenance issues that need to be addressed and they need to be identified, as well as we have now community needs and we have space needs, both in the building, outside of the building, on the grounds. So in order for us to really help create that roadmap, the first step for us is to do what we call fact-finding. And that is by interviewing and meeting with members of your staff and your designated representatives, it allows us to understand what those items really are that define and create need. And it's everything from creating maybe more space, creating better parking, to looking at infrastructure deferred maintenance issues. With those types of facts, we then would take it to the next level, which would be to identify prioritization. And that could be, it could be from a budget perspective, it could be from a logistics perspective, or it could just be from an immediate need perspective. If the roof is caving in, it's probably an immediate need. And once those priorities have been identified, then the next step would be to engage in a project rollout, which would then create a fiscal budgetary plan for you folks to create a strategic plan on how we can accomplish this master plan. And so what we have tonight is the initial findings and what we have in front of you is we always tend to start from what I would call like the 30,000 view, 30,000-foot view. And that is to try to take an overall snapshot of where you're at today. And in working with Mick and his staff, we have some more understanding of the inner workings of the facility. Not really going to talk much about that tonight because that's still being defined. Tonight, I'm really hopeful just to identify some of the physical barriers and constraints that we might have when we start talking about potential growth on the site for both the physical building, the bricks and sticks, as well as the surrounding campus and the site. So what we have in front of you are actually just a few little documents that kind of represent this. So what's on the screen now is just a simple Google Maps image of your existing condition, as recent as the satellite has snapped the photo, of course. So if it is inaccurate, I apologize. Our first step is to really take a look at the overall regulatory restrictions that you might have. And what that does to us is it kind of identifies our playing field, if you will, or our boundaries. And I don't know if my little laser here is going to work, Sean, but if you can see my little red dot, it's going to fade out on me. Maybe it's easier for me just to go up. Want to do that? As you probably are intimately familiar, the approximate boundaries are this kind of large green tract here. And with the current zoning, as you may know, the city of Wenouski is adopting a Form-based code. And Form-based code has slightly different rules than other codes do, but really what that does for us is it creates initial boundaries and the types of use that can be established. The short version here is I think we're in good shape in terms of boundaries and ability to grow the physical building. The next step is to say, okay, realistically, what are areas of growth potential to increase the footprint of the building if that was a desired plan or and/or if it was necessary to accomplish your priority goals for creating space in the building. And it's hard to see here, hopefully it's a little easier to see on the plan, but really the back of the building creates the most opportunity for growth as the front clearly involves most of the parking and to the north-east, I'd say, is where your current, it's a soccer practice field, as well as there's wetlands here. So there's some restrictions here. So our focus was to say, do we have growth potential in the back of the building? We also have a little bit of growth potential probably in the front, right between the main entrance here. So that establishes some approximate square footages and respecting the fact that we need natural light. Well, what you can see is that if we grow, then we impact circulation, we impact roadways. So in this particular concept, one of the thoughts was to divert the existing loop road by expanding some parking into the back. Well, by doing that, we obviously impose upon the existing ball field. So one of the concepts here is to potentially relocate the ball field so we have adjacent fields down here to accommodate expanded parking. The other option consideration was potentially to make the elementary school playground, we'll relocate that and expand the parking here. So we have more contiguous parking to potentially connect the loop road. So those are a couple of high-level ideas to concentrate on. What are the practical pros and cons to that, those potential solutions? Okay? So I'll just go back here. If you want to snap to the next slide. Yeah. Which is actually the third page in your little packet. The second page is really more of a boundary, black and white boundary, to show you kind of where the property lines are. Not quite as useful for you as the other one, but it's a little easier to read with the potential growth boxes. Would you guys, I think I have extras if you guys want a copy?
I've seen it.
Okay. So the third page is more of a floor plan of the building and everything in white is existing. And the two boxes in the blue are identified as potential backfill areas. And that term I use a lot in terms of if we're going to grow somewhere, usually we have to decompress somewhere else. And this center hub includes the administrative area as well as the cafeteria. And part of the initial concepts and discussions identify the fact that if we were to grow potentially, those are areas that also need some attention and need some growth potentially in the building. They could be displaced, they could be improved or expanded, and that just kind of highlights to us possible use spaces. The orange blocks are physical growth potential. And so from the high level, what this starts to establish to us is where we could potentially expand the building. Now, as I said in the kind of the Google image, any expansion of the building does have an impact on the site and the logistics. So part of our fact-finding and part of our discussions are to incorporate dialogue with your designated representatives to say, what are the important pieces here? You know, we're going to impact potentially a ball field or a playground. What does that mean? And what's the fallout? We are going to potentially impact classroom space. What does that mean? And through that dialogue, it allows us to come back with multiple options and multiple solutions to say, here are ways to do that. And then I would say, finally, once we have gathered that information, we start to nail down ideas that are a little bit more detailed that in concert, we can provide budgets for and timelines. Because in order for anybody to make a decision, obviously, on anything, we need to be able to understand what's the impact to our fiscal budgets, what's the impact to our timeline, and put a plan in place that is strategic and allows everybody involved to understand that this is the plan that we've bought into consensus across the board is to say, here are projects A, B, C, and D. Here's how we'd like to roll them out. Here's how much they're going to cost and here's how we're going to fund them. And this really is viewed to be a master plan as, as I would call it, a living document. So it's not something we're just going to do over the next few months and then hopefully, you know, not sit on a shelf and get dusty. It's something that we want to revisit on a regular basis. We want to implement the projects in a strategic way, but at the same time, we want to learn from that implementation and make sure the assumptions that we're making today, a year from now still hold up, or two years from now still hold up. Because as a master plan, we do view this as a short and long-term vision. We understand that your current bond matures in 2020, which means hopefully in 2020, there's more opportunity for you to get additional funds to do maybe larger projects. Between now and then, we understand that there's probably deferred maintenance projects or there's other projects that want to be implemented as soon as possible. So these are the types of strategies that we're beginning to deploy. And as we move through the process, we'll continue to come back to you with updates and talk about what the next steps are. So I think.
Yeah, the only thing, I mean, the only thing I would add is, right now, what we're doing is figuring out the composition of facilities committee, task force, whatever you want to call that. So it's an inclusive process with representation from all the different roles internally, externally, stakeholders across the whole community. And then also figuring out, you know, what are their roles in that? You know, decision-making versus advocacy and so forth. And our goal right now is to have a committee composed and put it out and build that committee before the end of the school year and have an organizational meeting early summer.
Any questions? Comments?
This may be a dumb question, but so your assessment is that the current existing infrastructure is structurally stable enough that it makes sense to add on to it?
Well, horizontally, yes. We are considering potential vertical options, but we just haven't gotten to that point of the assessment yet. Because you have land, which they don't make much anymore, but we don't usually like to go horizontally if we can avoid it, but logistically, it may be the more practical option here. But right now, we don't know what the growth needs are going to be. What we can tell you is by regulatory requirements, how much growth potential there is. And so, yeah, those next steps are to say, as your community evolves and as your learning needs evolve, the English language learning, for example, is a high topic of conversation. And how do we accommodate that? And what are the facilities needed to do that? And as Sean opened with, we understand that there's already need for staff, for room for staff, so that they're not working in broom closets and things like that. So right now, this is just basically saying, what are the limits of growth, realistic limits? Because, yes, we could build anything. We could go pretty much anywhere, but they come with a cost, they come with exceptions. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay? Anything else? No?
Thanks, Sean.
You good?
Yeah.
Thank you, Josh.
Well, thanks for having me. Look forward to taking to the next step, for sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll run into you more than once over the next year and a half.
Oh, yeah. The next several months, I think, are going to be pretty hot and heavy for us, so. Great. And I, there may be a few extra copies there, so.
Yep, there definitely are. Make sure Sean gets those. You good?
Thanks, Sean.
Thanks for having me, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Having a good evening.
Thanks.
Okay. So as we move along, public comments is next and seeing none. Move along. It's on the agenda. So at this point, then, we were going to put an executive session in here. We will, from a time perspective, this is the best place in the agenda to put it. So we're going to shut down for anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour. Do this first executive session for student discipline and we will be back. I will accept the motion to move into executive session.
So moved.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Reading, by the way.
So executive session simply dissolved, so we are back. And I would accept the motion at this point to accept the administrative recommendations based on the student disciplinary here in 40080 and all the recommendations as is.
So moved.
Any other, not many comments. All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Sean, if we can, we'll look to you to do a summary and take care of that. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, the consent agenda. I would accept a motion to accept it as written.
Is that adding list to it?
That is not. We actually put that in 7C so that we can make sure that we had talked about it later.
Wait. Oh, you put it in 7C?
Yeah. Yep.
I was thinking the same thing. Okay.
Okay. I'd accept that motion to accept consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Nope.
Just the, another award in there for, in your, in your report was pretty, it's a 62,500 for the --
Oh, the, with Circus Schmerkus.
Circus Schmerkus.
Yeah, with the middle school.
Interesting, interesting piece, so, yeah, keeps coming. It's awesome. The only other piece, I might have another note in here on another subject, so. All those in favor, accept the consent? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Ends, measurement, item six, discussing, discussing ends, metrics alignment. And I want to take, Jen, you got a copy? I didn't think Alex had a copy. So without Julian and Tori here, I want to keep this discussion relatively brief and then take it up again in June when they're here because I think it's critical that we make sure that we are all in alignment with the measurements that we do have. Sean, I'll have you give a little bit of an overview, if you will. We can keep it kind of brief because we're going to do it again in June, but just to get something to think about as we go through time.
I was going to say, it's pretty factual.
Okay. So maybe I won't even bother with the --
Yeah.
If you're going to go over it, you might want to --
I won't go over every single item. How about that?
Yeah, let me preface this for tonight's discussion and for June's discussion. Anytime you get data, one data point is interesting, but you can't do anything with it. We're now at a point where we have at least two data points, but if they're different, you still only know that they're different. You don't know where you might be. One of the things we want to look, when we're looking at this data here, I think it's imperative, at least early, that our discussions are not on an analysis of is the data good or bad, but whether the data that's in here is the stuff that we need to have it pointing to the ends that suggest whether the district is giving us what we've asked for. And so I think with that background, I think Sean, again, and even in June, we won't delve into the data dealing with whether it's good or bad, but is it pertinent or not, I think, is the question. So with that background, just a brief fly-through, if you would, I think.
Yeah. So I mean, this, this all started, you know, four years ago when, with the board's end statement and starting to talk about, well, how are we going to know? How's the board going to know? How's the community going to know that we are making progress towards the ends? And one of the things we understood very quickly was we didn't necessarily have a strong sys-data system in place. The board supported the hiring of a data manager. We started collecting these different indicators over time. So this is, is an attempt at taking the components of the ends statement and then finding some indicators that we would be able to track over time. And so the format kind of that you have in your packet right there is the highlighted green part is the, is the part that's in that section and then the bullets, for example, on, if you're looking at this one, I don't know if the pages match up with the electronic copy, but page one, so college and career ready. We start with the very beginning. So in order for kids to be college and career ready, we got to start when they're really young. So are they ready for kindergarten? And then are they attending school? Are they in school so that they're getting the instruction and the support that they need?
So the attendance and behavior here are not necessarily a subset of kindergarten. It's just that everything is centered.
Correct. Everything's centered.
Okay.
Yep. So then, and you can kind of move down, you know, and you see those other indicators.
So let me, let me stop you just for a second, even before we get to the data, just the ties. One of the, I think the order may be purposeful in here, putting the S-BAC scores down and the standardized test at the bottom. I think that's an interesting position. I think, to me, the four, five, and six-year graduation rate are pretty key in that we may not necessarily have kids that start here that are ready and measuring it just to a four-year graduation rate, to me, has always seemed a bit ludicrous based on some of the situations we deal with. That goes to retention. And if you can, you know, retain kids, I think that's a big deal. One of the things that I did see also was the behavior data as tied to reading. When we, when we looked at those, there seemed to be a very strong correlation. So I think it just goes to being able to show that putting in the behavioral specialists sometime back, maybe paying dividends, if we can see that, that turns the curve on the percent reading thing. So those seem to, at least, all tie together. And I am happy to see college and career ready starting in kindergarten. That's always impressed me.
Yeah. So if you turn to, you know, and I'll point out just a few examples of some of the challenges that we face when we're collecting data. So the kindergarten readiness, for instance, has changed. So you have the new, the newest data 15-16, which is in a different format than what we had collected from 2011 to 15. However, when you really look at it, there's some important things from both of those data sets that are important for us to look at. But when you're looking at a trend and you want five, six, or more years, we're going to have to keep building that, like Mike said. And then I think I would --
Attendance is obvious.
Yeah.
Kids here.
Attendance, and then you've got some S-BACs, some reading, and the reading, just so you know, is that's our local measure. So those are things we're using locally, like reading plus, some programs for English language learners like Lexia and others. And that one is, we've already got a couple of years that we've been tracking there and we can see kids that are making a year's growth or not and tracking individual kids over time. Then you got the behavior summary for each, for JFK Middle School and the high school, which I think that, that's actually becoming a pretty good system that we can track over Then the graduation rates, like Mike mentioned, those, those are pretty easy for us because the state produces those, five, four, five, and six-year. I would even suggest that, you know, we want to track down to the individual student so that we know exactly what's happening. So if they're not, some, some students are graduating in more than six years and they need more time. And others may not graduate, but we want to understand why and where they're going. Then after the six-year graduation rate, I put in the longitudinal data. That's an example. We have this for every single student. So if you look at the one that has the, has the red and the green, and we've developed a color coding system. So this is the level of data that's really useful for principals and teachers. So in teams, they can look at this, and I took out the names of the teachers and the students, but you can see, you know, this is, this is two years of data. What grade they were in, whether they're on some sort of a learning plan, whether they're having English language learning, then the attendance data, and then behaviors, reading, and math. So then we've developed a color coding system where we, greens are good, yellows are kind of like we need to watch and, you know, put some supports in place, and reds are, you know, big flags that we got to really wrap around kids in these areas. And like I said, we have that for now for every single student in the building. The, the next set, this comes from the Education Development Center, so this is the Nellie May Foundation. And I chose some indicators here because they have done, they've administered these survey questions to students and teachers for three years running, so we actually have three years of data to see where there's growth or not. I had, I had a hard time with this one choosing, you know, like which, which ones do I get rid of? There's a lot of them there. There's probably too many, but I would, when we get to that point, I'd be interested in what you think about which ones are the most important.
That's where it becomes, is it pertinent? Can we influence it? Do we need to influence it? And can we continue to monitor it after the Nellie May group stops doing it?
Right.
So, okay.
So that kind of runs through page 17 or so. Then the, the next part of the, of the end statement is a cost supported by a majority of the Wenouski community. So I, I put the budget results for the past 10 years. And so you can see there -- and so you can see there, uh, and I, I just put in the, the, the margins, um, in that timeframe, there was only one, uh, budget, as you can see, down in oh-eight, that took two votes to get a pass school budget. That might be an older one, Jen, that you have electronically, 'cause I updated it today.
Gotcha, I have my.
In your hard copy, it's on page eighteen. So that's a, that's a pretty, uh, concrete one to measure, part of the end statement, so, and one that you should be very proud of. Uh, then getting to healthy, productive, and successful lives, and again, I listed some of the bullets there, um, I'm still playing, I have one set of mindfulness data, um, that wasn't included in here because I found some discrepancies that I'm trying to, trying to clean up. Um, but you have athletic participation, the dental program, uh, our Spartans in Motion, which is the middle school movement, um, with once, one set of data. And then, um, the Abbey Group has done a great job of continuing to collect data and make that available to us, so we can see the, the meal trends across years, and breakfast, lunch, supper, and summer, and those are averages per day. So for example, this past year, we were serving on average just under five hundred breakfasts per day, five hundred seventy-six lunches, and then suppers just under sixty, uh, per day. And then, uh, the summer, you can see. And then.
When you say supper, is that like a meal they send home?
Yeah, it's like a bag, bed dinner.
And they have the opportunity every day?
If you're in an after-school activity.
Okay.
That's great.
And then the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, which is done every other year, and I'm really curious to see, um, uh, another year of results, um, 'cause this, I, I think that we've done a good job of tracking this as well, and so, in this one, I pulled out a couple from reports that I had, I just did a, um, uh, in the newsletter, did a piece on bullying, and included some of the data that's on page twenty-two, um, which is, and that's all specific to bullying, and then on page twenty-three, um, did some, uh, uh, correlation across some other areas too, particularly around health, um, vegetable consumption, um, and then also some of those later ones about, um, relationships between teachers and students, um, uh, students feeling like they matter in the community and so forth, which are all, in my opinion, a part of, 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 of health, uh, health, healthy students and healthy community. And then, the last one, engaging local and global community, this is the one I struggled with the most, i- i- I, I have a hard time figuring out how it's not just a list of things, and how we can actually come up with some, some data-driven indicators for this.
Participants of it? They come, any of our students are actually participating in these?
Yeah.
'Cause if they're participating, then they're engaged. I mean, that would be a good way of.
Something else, yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Sean, there's a youth risk behavior survey question about whether or not they feel valued by their community, right?
There is, yeah, that's in, uh, twenty-three.
Wouldn't that be a good measure for that?
Yeah, could be, right.
Valued by, whether they actually engaged in, I guess, if they feel valued by, they have to be a little bit engaged to, to know.
You can, you can get a good attendance of how many of our students went to the Penguin Plunge, and like, who's doing jump rope for her.
Yeah.
Who goes to the New York City trip, who has the opportunity to go to the New York City trip, make sure that those engagement, like, they can be engaged, that the opportunities are there, which we have great teachers that always try to do that, so.
Yeah, engaged in the global community is an interesting one, 'cause the only thing I came out with from our, um, our roundtable discussion on global engagement was that it is all done locally. It's a global thought, but done locally, and, and so, that, that was the one piece that I.
Yeah.
That'll be an interesting discussion.
But it's not, it's, it's, uh, when I look at global, I don't look at, like, I mean, how do you look at it that you think that, uh, being local is a problem?
No, but it's, it's local, the locally engaged, uh, the, the students that planted flowers at chicks and, and watched them all summer, that was kind of an interesting, uh, gig, that's local.
Right, and, but that, that's community involvement.
Yeah.
But local or global can be just in recycling.
That's, that, that's what I'm getting at, it is that act that is done.
Act local thing global.
Right.
Right, which happens, so like, how do you?
Put a stamp on it, how do you measure it?
How is, you can measure that, but just by, are your recycling bins full all the time, and people properly composting, 'cause you have that whole composting thing now too, right?
Well, for me, the, the interesting part is like, um, in, in some, the way I would've measured this when I was at CVU was like the international trips, kids going to other countries, and having a cultural experience and practicing language and so forth, we, we don't do that here, but we also have a built-in global, uh, community here, and so how does that really play out in terms of, of, of the end statement?
And what opportunities do you have for the kids to actually delve into that?
Yeah.
I mean, Deleve's conversation with us that one night was pretty powerful to understand it.
Yeah.
Just to understand.
And I know.
But.
Kids like my own in Colchester High School, they're not getting that day-to-day global experience that kids who maybe have grown up white in, uh, generational and white in, in Vermont are getting in Winuski.
Absolutely.
The other thing that I do recognize as well is the, a, a part of the global engagement, when you go back to things like recycling, um, a- and even the healthy behavior, a lot of that tends to be modeled, and I just look at my kids that when they came through, it was, "Oh, gross, Mom, how can you eat that?", and then all of a sudden, they come back and say, "Hey, Mom, you know what I had for supper tonight?", and they're gone, "I had what you've been having", right, "I'm eating vegetarian now", or, you know, just that modeling as you go through time, and from the teachers and the staff, doing all that modeling.
Yeah.
Is enough to, to get the, to plant the seed too, so it may not necessarily have to go external much to find it. We'll see where we go with that discussion.
Alex, I know you didn't have a lot of time to look this, did you have any impressions to share, or anything that you saw in there that interested you?
I don't think so.
Yeah? We'll come back to you, I'm sure, this year and next year to get some perspective.
Despite local and global, the rest of it, I mean, it's a pretty comprehensive amount of data points that we have to exist, so, I mean.
Absolutely.
Good work.
And you, and you really gotta be a little bit careful about diluting it to the point where you're trying to measure everything and you just can't figure out, you really wanna make sure you can actually do something with it.
And there's a lot to, lot to chew on in there.
Yeah. All right, and so, well, what we'll do is we'll just bring that one back in June and continue the discussion, we'll get a homework assignment for Julie and Tori, Julian and Tori to watch the meeting for the discussion tonight. Um, all right, uh, item seven, uh, executive limitations, here we have a financial conditions and activities, uh, policy interpretation to, uh, discuss and approve, and a communications and support to the board as well, for the superintendent monitoring report. So.
So the tuition waiver?
Uh, was that, is that the next one?
Did I miss that one? Seven A.
Seven A, yeah. Ah, sorry, yes, the tuition waiver first, missed that.
So in your packet, you had, uh, a copy of Procedure five oh-four, which is the resident, non-resident status, and the reason that you have that is because although procedures usually in the, the purview of the superintendent or designee, it does state in there that the school board may accept, so that's why it's before you. Um, and then you had a letter from the family, um, and I, I'm recommending and supporting the letter, um, that you, uh, allow William Chen to return next year for eighth grade as a non-resident and waive the tuition, um, and then, the expectation would be, if you were to ex- to approve that, that he would, um, apply for school choice as a Colchester resident, uh, to, uh, attend Winuski for high school, if he so chose to do that after eighth grade here.
So, just from a precedent standpoint, we have granted, uh, exceptions for parts of years as we've come through with, uh, families moving out of town and they wanted to finish up in the year, this is the first one at least, I've seen in, in six years for, uh, requests for the year, so.
I think it's a wonderful compliment to Winuski schools, this family wants to take that step to have their son educated here.
And I think it's important that being it's his eighth grade year, that it's extremely important that he stays with his students' body, so.
I, I, it, to me, it's a, it's one of the biggest compliments you can have, if somebody wanna stay, so, um, uh, if really any more discussion needs to be had.
I don't think so.
I don't.
I would accept a motion to accept the tuition waiver request by the Chens.
So moved.
Any other discussion? All those, uh, in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And you will let them know?
I will, thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, after watching people bail for years, this is a, an extreme compliment. All right, the seven B then is, and I jumped the gun a little bit, communication and support to the board, this is a superintendent monitoring report.
Correct.
Yes, so, um, item. Um, questions, comments? On this guy, that, we've done this one, uh, once previously, right?
This is the, this is the second time around. The only thing that you really see that has changed is some of the dates in the evidence, which I updated to kind of the end of the first report to reflect since then. And then, uh, there was, let's see, the part, I don't know, eleven, um, in the prior report, you had acted as a quasi-judicial hearing bor- uh, body since, um, and you have not since, according to our records, since, uh, December seventeenth, twenty-fourteen, when the last report was posted. And a plan, um, was developed to track gifts, that is noted there, so that's new language 'cause we didn't have a, a process in place to do that.
Okay. Just on the end of, on the end of eleven there, it was a little stray, yeah.
The end.
Yeah, so, um, comments?
Thoughts?
I'm, I'm just gonna offer that I am not left, um, without information I need, I've not been surprised, um, by things, I get notified, most of the time, I'll pass it on to you guys, some of the times, it's not pertinent, but those are kinda my judgment, but that happens very rarely, so, I, I think this one is, uh, well, well-done and coordinated, and I would accept a motion to accept board, uh, superintendent monitoring report on policy two-point-eight, communication and support to the board.
So moved.
So it's up, it's, it was, if we're doing the two-month, it was just a review and discuss, you can approve it if you like, although it wasn't warned as approved.
That's right, it wasn't.
So it would be in consent next month.
All right, jumping the gun again, all right, so it'll go into consent and we'll do it that way.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Yep.
Should she withdraw her motion?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion withdrawn. Thank you, sorry, leading you miss, astray tonight. Ah, student report to the board, Alex, you've been.
So we need to do the, um.
Oh, seven C, sorry.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go crawl in a hole or start over, one or the other.
So this was a late addition to the list that was in the consent agenda for a driver's education teacher who, uh, as many of you may know, um, is actually working here this year after we were unable to, uh, find a driver's ed teacher late in the game, and, uh, was contracted service this year, and, um, so then we, we posted the position and, uh, rehired him via the negotiated agreement to do the, the same work next year in a flexible way so that students can access it outside of the school day.
Great.
And it'll work for the students along that schedule?
Yeah.
Okay, 'cause I know we were doing it like seven AM in the morning, right?
No, it's after school now.
Which was the original, okay.
Really?
After school and some weekends.
Why couldn't we have done that years ago?
Yeah.
Right, Mike?
Been there, done that, made a few trips up here at six-thirty in the morning.
And they have to be here, but they can't drive yet, so, that's just rig it up.
Yep.
Here, can I tend to file, please?
Uh, so, I would accept a motion to accept this nomination for driver's ed teacher.
So moved.
And the teacher's name again?
Uh, Derek Demers, D-M-E-R-S. Any other discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, I'm gonna try to behave myself now, so. I'm gonna turn it over to you for a minute, Alex, so I can compose all yours, I, I gotta gather it all back up, yeah.
Okay, so, um, it's almost the skill, end of the school year, there's, um, five more weeks about, five and a half. Uh, so, today Rainbow's gone at the, to the All-State Music Festival, and she's representing one of three students that will go from Winuski High School, uh, the other two are Key and Keenagwen and, um, Enis Horozovich, um, Rainbow and Enis will be in the orchestra, playing, and Key will be representing the chorus. And Winuski will also be one of the s- the sixteen, uh, marching bands in the parade tonight. Um, yeah. Uh, the National Honor Society Ceremony was on May ninth, and honored eighteen juniors and seniors to their induction to the National Honor Society. Um, some of the seniors gave their stalls for graduation, and their stalls were given to the juniors that would accept them. Um, today was the May half-day, uh, being the last day of the ha- of the year, um, the planning team decided to end with a students and teacher dodgeball tournament. So, the students would, uh, face off against each other to play the, the teacher dream team. And at the end, um, the dodging feds reached the finals to face the teachers, and the teachers actually won.
That's hard to take. Students losing.
We're pretty dominant, right, basketball game too?
Oh. Teacher's are just too good.
They have a dunker in the basketball, so they're good.
Yeah.
Um, also on the May half-day, uh, we had a field day where all the advisories would either be, like, grouped up or, uh, face against other advisories, there's, um, activities like tug-of-war, three-legged race, uh, and actually, me and Rainbow went against each other, like, and I won.
There you go.
Uh, and the day concluded about with a community meeting, just rep- to, um, just slow things down and just inform the community, and also, um, Rainbow had to update the students about the student rep position. Uh, since there's no applications for the first week, and, um, she had to extend the deadline to, uh, tonight at midnight because we didn't get, like, 'cause of the lack of applications that we did get, um, it was hard to, uh, you know, pick one.
Okay.
When there aren't any, yeah.
Uh, but like, I think we, so far, I've only seen one other, like, one actually submitted. I haven't seen anyone else, but, yeah, and the last thing, we had a student-led teacher interview for the math lab, and like, a group of six students were like, selected, and we had like, a, pretty much a grouping, and we'd tell our opinions and see what kinda notes we would take, and pretty much help Sean select the teacher.
I saw your notes, they were really helpful.
And that concludes the.
Did the, uh, was the input from the students positive, about the interviews?
Yeah. They said, the teachers said, like, we had pretty much another view to like, help them, just inform them of who they're gonna work with.
And how many candidates did you interview?
We interviewed all of them.
So five or six?
Five or six, yeah.
Okay, and then they, students gave input, um, and the, the, the staff interview team, and then, um, they make recommendations about finalists, and. And, uh, actually Leon and I have done the two finalist interviews and they also go into the math lab and spend time. Spend like a period where they get to see the math lab and, um, uh, we get to observe them working in the math lab a little bit. So it's pretty, pretty thorough, but we'll, uh, that'll be another nomination that'll be coming to you at some point.
June. Great. All right, well set?
Mm-hmm.
All right, um, other hiring things coming to a close?
Yes, yep, we've got a few out there. We've got a, um, a few open ones that I mentioned about the, uh, an elementary school, uh, classroom teacher and elementary special educator and the high school math teacher.
Okay. Good, all right, thank you, Alex. All right, we have two, um, regular policies, uh, tonight. Uh, parental involvement and, uh, board member code of conduct. So parental involvement, the.
So, Mike, I have a question on this. The date on that is from the fall. Was this something that just didn't get that?
No, actually that date is wrong. So the, uh, it should've been, it wasn't changed. It was in the, uh, spring of fourteen. So for some reason that must've slipped by us. So it would've been April of twenty fourteen and the first read. And then second read and approval at May.
Not October twelfth, two thousand and sixteen.
No, no.
A little out of order.
Yeah.
Good catch.
Just kinda weird, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's a good catch.
Maybe it came and went quickly.
So this guy ends up from a policy standpoint saying, yeah, we want people involved and then ends up in, very heavily into procedures.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think this, if I remember doing this one, uh, this was a policy that was, the procedures were, were, uh, done like, I think by the V S B A.
Mm-hmm.
To, to be, uh, detailed. Is that, does that cause any issues being that detailed? Sometimes, uh, three sentences is better than thirty-five paragraphs.
Right.
And it doesn't.
I think that we sh- I would recommend that the board that we revise, uh, our local policy more based on the, uh, the V S B A model. Um, because there's language out in the procedures here too that refer to N C L B A, which is, oh, it's changed. So that'll have to be updated. Um, and I do think that our, our policy could be, um, a little stronger in the policy area like the, uh, the V S B A model is with definite, with some definitions.
Yep, still procedure.
Heavy.
Heavy.
But that wouldn't be up to us anyways, that's up to them.
The procedure itself, right, right. I guess that's what I was leaning on. There wasn't much of a policy there to state what directionally we, we wanted, so. Thoughts?
I like the model one way better than the one we have in place.
Gets to a little better level of, of detail.
And I would say it would take.
And that one looks like it's a relatively recent, uh, V S B A update as well, right?
Yeah.
Since it's required.
Yeah, as you see in that, that first footnote in the, you know, uh, that receive Title One Part A funds, we do, so. We have to be in compliance with all of those things, the compacts and so forth.
All right, I, I, I'd agree with that for sure. Any other?
No.
I, I didn't see any real major adjustments to that either at this point. Okay, so we'll bring that one back in, in consent?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, let's see, down through. Second one then is, uh, board member conflict of interest. Uh, I believe that this one kinda hit, it, well, it hit on everything, the policy itself hit on everything. I think we needed to hit on, uh, to keep that as an item of, you know, just for board members to think about, so. I, I didn't see anything that it missed.
This one we've updated within, yeah, so that makes sense.
We've done what?
It was updated two years ago, so it's in the scheme of returning. So is there anything new Sean then?
No.
The new, so.
No, and as you, you can see when you compare them, they're virtually the same.
Right.
Right.
It's just gonna be a matter of, uh, making sure the references and cross-references are all up to date and correct and.
Yep.
Yep. All right, so that's probably the one thing, uh, you being the newest one, Matt. Um, I'm not convinced that I brought this to your attention at any point for future reference. It's a good piece. I mean, I think we did the code of conduct in our normal piece, but it's not the conflict of interest piece here that it, not that it would, it would matter, but it would be good to bring that upfront to the attention. So that you can recuse yourself if this is something you don't feel comfortable doing. It's, so, I'll have to remember to put that in, all right? Good. You know, the last time I was per- oh, never mind. Okay, um, the last item here under D then is, um, eight D. It is our board policy interpretation on agenda planning.
Are you gonna do the legislative update?
Uh, I thought that was next.
It is.
Yep, we still had eight D to do. Board pol- is that?
It's E.
Eight C is the legislative update.
Yeah, C.
Oh, C was?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I think the only things to, to really talk about are that it does appear that the, the state level negotiation of, of, of health benefits for, uh, school employees is still being discussed. There were some late nights last week, I heard. Um, and, uh, there is a pretty, uh, a pretty strong division, um, amongst the legislature right now on this issue.
How long are they in session till?
Uh, they are, they went back today.
Right.
And, um, I don't know how long they'll stay. I got a sense from, uh, talking to Clem that it would be a few days. Yeah.
And this is probably one of the biggest items left on the docket here.
It is. The other one that I did, I did get some sort of an update on today was that there was actually a, a marijuana bill that was passed and it will go to the governor, um, that is about, um, it's legalization. That would be a comp, uh, effective, I think it's July of twenty eighteen. And, uh, it allows a, a certain amount of marijuana for personal use and, um, uh, to be able to grow a certain amount. Um, and then also forms some sort of a study committee to look at kind of the, um, the sale and the tax and revenue side of it for, uh, for beyond that. So that certainly for, for, um, schools and cities and so forth is.
There's so many things that.
Is gonna be something that we'll need to pay attention to.
Just can't, like. Like how does that, what does that entail? Are they accommodating all those things? Asking me one hefty bill.
Yeah, we'll see how it, how it manifests itself for sure. Yeah, that was, I mean, the, the biggest one I think is the, the finalizing the budget with the benefits piece in. All right. All right, now we can do eight D. I promise I'm gonna get better here.
Do you need some reading glasses?
It may be June. I think the answer is yes, but that's not my issue.
You know, you can expand the screen.
It's, it's not trouble reading. It's following directions. I've had this issue for a while. All right, um, so the last, uh, policy here piece is, uh, our board interpretation of, uh, four dot five agenda planning. Um, so I'd, I'll open up for thoughts on interpretations, hit the spot. Um, any clarifications needed?
Seems very much aligned.
We're getting toward, uh, cleaning these up for the first round anyway. I think the second round will be a whole lot better, be easier to start with something, so. All right, so we can, uh, bring that back and we'll approve that as we. Now I'm troubled here. Can't get back to my agenda.
I was gonna say, I don't think I even have that in my, the packet by the way, online.
Online, really? That's.
I'll check under the consent agenda card.
What I pulled out.
Did you print yours out?
I did. It's in the bag. It's tied to whatever the section was.
Um, I think we're also gonna have to, uh, push.
Oh, it's tied to, um, no, I, not in my.
It's not in yours, fine.
So we're gonna have to push the, uh, board retreat date for August out until we can get Julian and Tori back so we can get, uh, calendars aligned as well. And, uh, recent community engagement? Any, anything there? Okay, uh, next agenda, any items that we need to bring other than the standard?
All the ends and the.
Yep, we'll move, we'll move that guy back, yeah. And then upcoming dates, uh, have a superintendent board chair, uh, training session. As Sean and I have been asked to be on a panel, May seventeenth, I gotta have, we, I gotta have at least eight hours of training a year. And this is the, this is the setup to, to take care of that piece. Uh, but we've been asked to be on a panel to discuss the interactions between, uh, board chair and, and superintendent and, and, uh, I'm not even a hundred percent sure. They had three or four questions to prop the thing up with and get started, so. That'll be, uh, next week, uh, yes, the spring conference is right after that. Uh, prom, May twentieth, coming already. I saw that banquet on June eleventh. Next board meeting on the fourteenth and graduation on the seventeenth at one.
One event that's not in there that I just wanted to note was that, um, the State Board of Education will be here for their May meeting next Tuesday.
Oh.
All day and they have it at the home school of the outgoing rep, who is Rainbow. Um, so they will be here and, um, uh, there'll be some recognition for Rainbow and her service to the State Board of Education. And, uh, our band is also gonna play, um, after, uh, the abbey prepares a lunch for them. Then they'll go in the P I C and listen to the, to a little bit of music and return to their meeting. So that'll be going on in here next Tuesday all day.
Oh, nice.
All day?
Yeah.
Wow. Cool.
That's awesome that she's had a chance to do that.
Mm-hmm, and she'll take them on a tour of the building as well. Talk about some of the things we're doing here.
Yep, nice. Um, good, that's, uh, closes the agenda at this point. Um, we having another executive session here for labor negotiations. Is the student discipline the one we already took care of?
Yes.
So that took to the top.
Yep.
Um, labor negotiations, um, we can do that executive session and bring you to where we are. There's not a lot of change, I don't think, since the last time.
Then I don't.
Or we can do.
I'm fine with not.
June, when we.
We have more information.
Come back, okay. So, good, so we will, um, bypass that and not need it. Good, um, with that then I would, uh, is there anything else? Anything we missed? All right, I would accept a motion to adjourn?
So.
Go ahead.
No, you go right ahead.
So moved.
All right, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great, thank you.